City of Forest Park Council Meeting Number 1447. Today is January 21st, it is 2025, 7:00 PM. We're going to start by standing and saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, starting with item number one on the agenda, it's roll call. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Present.
Here.
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 All right, I need a motion to excuse Councilmember Clark.
I give a motion to excuse Councilmember Clark.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. No further discussion. All those in favor on the motion, let it be known by the sound of voting, aye? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion passes. Councilwoman Clark is excused. Moving on to item number two, which are the minutes. Has everyone received the minutes? And are there any changes or corrections to be made? Hearing none. Moving on to item number three, which is presentations. And I do not believe that we have any today, so we're going to move past that. And then item number four is communications from the public. So this is the time for citizens to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the podium, give your name and address, and then state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for ease of transcription. Comments are limited to five minutes. And I do not see any member in the audience. So we're going to move on to item number five, which is reports from council members, starting with Councilmember Adams.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Hello, Council, Happy New Year. Welcome back, everybody. Very excited to be back. We have a ton of things and lots of work to do this year. I wanted to report that the Beautification Committee, we did our holiday judging. We will be congratulating with an award those who won at our next council meeting. Also too, we did donate two beautiful points at us for the Bourbon Fest. And this was around the holiday time. So we did two beautiful points at us and to the Bourbon Fest for a raffle. The Beautification Committee is still looking for members and subcommittee members. And we are just ready. We have a whole agenda ready for this year to do some amazing things with beautification, just to kind of expand our reach and be more visible and more active in the community. Also tomorrow, I will have the honor of meeting with Commissioner Dreehouse here in our Forest Park office along with Dr. Kambamba in an effort to have some discussions about immigration and what that looks like, not only for our nation, but also for the city of Forest Park and what we can do to better support our residents and also better address the issues that are had. And last but not least, I'd like to publicly thank Councilwoman Clark for her assistance this weekend with our 92% luncheon, which was a luncheon that we had held not only for Forest Park residents, but just residents in general, in an effort to start some momentum and some conversation about our local elections and elections to come. Thank you.
Right, Councilmember Adams, I didn't have any work session items. Would you like to add any?
No, sir, not at this time. But after our meeting tomorrow, there may be a few things on the agenda that I'd like to pick up and discuss.
Okay. And then Councilmember Clark is not here. Moving on to Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I'd like to wish everybody in Forest Park a happy 2025. I know today is the 21st, 22nd, but we haven't seen each other since 2024. So I hope your year's going well. First, I'd like to give a huge shout out to our Public Works for the job they did during the snowstorm we had a few weeks ago. And that was a lot of snow. And for those of us who were able, fortunate enough to be able to dig ourselves out, I thank the city because I was able to get to work on those days. So a huge shout out to our Public Works for that. Also, as a source of a local pride, a huge shout out to Wynton Woods alum and Ohio State cornerback Jermaine Matthews Jr., who was on the Ohio State championship team last night. So he is a proud graduate of Wynton Woods. So just to let you know, this council member is proud of you. And we know it's very cold outside, so to our residents, just be mindful of frozen pipes and whatnot. If you can, just turn on some water. Not a whole lot, but just a little bit, just to keep the pipes flowing. But if the pipes do freeze, that's what you should not do. Don't take an open flame to that frozen pipe, okay? Because you'll bust your pipe. You know, torch or anything like that. Just be mindful of that because it's too cold for you to be out there trying to get your pipes together. And that's all I have for today. I have nothing for the work session, but thank you very much, sir.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember. Moving on to First Vice Mayor Holt.
I just want to say Happy New Year to all of the residents of Forest Park. And as Councilmember Harrison said, it's very cold out there. Bundle up, especially the seniors. Be very careful. There's still some ice out there also. So be careful when you go out with that. I have nothing. And I do not have anything for the next meeting.
Thank you for that. Moving on to Second Vice Mayor, Dr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Happy New Year to our residents. I want to inform the residents that our first Quality of Life meeting for the year will be January the 28th at 6:30 here in the municipal building in Room 3B. And we invite you to come out. And that completes my report.
All right, do you have any work session items, Dr. Moore?
Uh, no, I do not.
All right, thank you. And moving on to Councilmember Sylvester.
Yes, Mayor, just to comment to our residents, Happy New Year. Just acknowledge a thank you to our city staff and council for a successful 2024 year. And we're thankful for that. And as has been stated by our other council members, we're still in the point of caution and taking heed to the weather that we're enduring. So just a note to residents and ourselves, be careful.
All right, thank you for that. Councilmember Sylvester, do you have any work session items?
Yes, sir.
All right, that concludes item number five, the reports from council members. Moving on to item number six, which is the mayor's report. To echo everyone's sentiments, Happy New Year. 2025 is going to be an even bigger and better year than last year. 2024 was an excellent year for the city of Forest Park, and that is due in no small part to the city administration, council members up here working, but of course, our wonderful residents making this a beautiful community. I don't have much to report. I did attend a Beautification Committee meeting. The Beautification Committee is solidifying the criteria for the yard judging contest. So that criteria has been decided upon. The city will make every effort to have residents participate, but as long as it matches the criteria, we'll be very stringent about who gets a flag if they meet those particular items that the Beautification Committee has set out. But they are also looking for volunteers. So remember, if you would like to volunteer for the Beautification Committee or any board or commission, please come to the city. Or you can do the application online. Fill out the application, do the requisite interview, and then see what positions are available. Other than that, I did attend the MLK breakfast at the Freedom Center yesterday. It was a wonderful event, as it is every year. And it was very, very cold. And I did give a special shout out to Councilmember Harrison for completing the march. I actually had another meeting to attend. But so as every year, it's very cold, but a lot of people poured out for that. And it was very, very well attended. And that breakfast was quite beautiful. Other than that, the only item that I would add to the work session is another conversation on our boards and commissions process. And with that, I will conclude my report. And then we're going to move on to item number seven, which is the city manager's report. And we'll hear it from Don Jones.
I'll try and make it short and sweet. Again, I want to thank our Public Works Department for all the hard work they put in in this recent snow event. And actually, two of them. And I want to commend them for the overtime that they worked. They were basically working 12-hour shifts for a couple of weeks straight. And 24 hours a day, two shifts of 12. So kudos to them. They did a great job. With all the stuff that's going on in Los Angeles and the fires that are ongoing, just a little note that earlier this year, we had our tabletop emergency management plan. And our emergency operations plan is hosted through, administered by the Hamlin County Emergency Management Team down there. And so we finished that. So we're paying attention to how we manage events and how we manage emergencies. And we've just got our results back. And again, we pay a lot of attention to that. And we make sure that we're as prepared as we can and we practice as much as we can. So we'll let the citizens know that it's on our priority list. And we've updated our plan and we practiced it. And we'll be implementing any changes that we need to make to make sure that we're, all of our departments are, their emergency management plans are up to date and ready to go in the event of any type of emergency. Not if it's a fire, but you know, it could be a windstorm or a tornado or anything like that. Our folks are well-trained and ready to go. I also want to let everyone know that the spring sports registration is ongoing as we speak. January 1st started and goes through February 16th. So if you're interested in soccer, T-ball, baseball, softball, now's the time to get out there and get those kids signed up. So again, that's ongoing through our rec department. Also, a little bit of news as well for city council here. I know we've got, always get a lot of questions every now and then. The digital sign is finally in. And we're waiting for the weather to go. And we'll be installing as soon as the weather cooperates. So we finally got it in. We've been waiting a while. We finally got it. So again, we're going to take down the old one and put up a brand new one. And I think it'll be really nice. But we've been waiting on this thing for a couple of years now. Street program is ongoing, but I want to let everyone know that also Mill Road is going to be closed from January 23rd through February 21st during the day, during the workday, from Springdale Road to Aspen Hill. And that's not in our city, but the detour will be right there on around Rayquas. Rayquas. Raycross. Say that six times fast. So anyway, if you're traveling that way, just be aware that that road's going to be closed during the day. And you'll need to follow the detours and make sure you take other, make other plans to get through there. But they're putting in a sewer line. And again, that's not in our city, but the detour will be right there. Other than that, we've had a, we're looking forward to a great 2025. And I'll answer any questions anybody has.
You said during the day, did he like start at 8 o'clock and end at 5?
They said during the workday.
Okay.
So I'm assuming that's 8 to 5.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you for that, Don. Moving on to item number eight, which is our other reports. We're going to start with our law director, Mr. John Wykoff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Recently, first of the year, the House Bill 315 was passed. That's the bill that allows our police department to charge $75 an hour. Throw maximum $750 for dash and body cam. That was justified by the legislative body by the fact that it takes a long time to go through the films and do the redaction. Because oftentimes at a police stop, you might have two, three, or even four police officers there with body cams. And it's four sets of body cams you have to go through. And once the police department redacts it, then I get it. And I have to go through and make sure the redactions are correct. So it's very time-consuming. And it was a recognition of that extra time to allow our police department to do this. And so I consulted with Lieutenant Pope about a policy for that procedure being added to our policy for public records. I also gave the city manager and our clerk some information regarding two recent decisions about public records. I consulted with Chief Arns about our, what's that called? Mutual aid agreement. It was all signed with Fairfield and everything. Springfield raised an issue. And I advised the chief that we do not want to do, they wanted us to remove the indemnification clause, which means if somebody in their department does something wrong and all departments get sued, Springdale would have to take care of that. They wanted to eliminate that. And I said, no, we can't do that. We'd be giving up our insurance company's right to pursue that indemnification. Which probably wouldn't be enforceable because of the insurance company having authority. Or you risk the insurance company saying, you gave up our right, so therefore, we're not going to provide protection or coverage for you. So I advising that clause stays in the mutual aid. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, that's the end of my report.
Thank you for that, John. Moving on to our other report from our clerk of council, Mr. Kia Bailey.
I'd like to report that Resolution Numbers 01-2025 through 03-2025 was posted as required, and that concludes our report.
All right, thank you for that. Moving on to item number nine, which is unfinished business and general orders. And there are none. So we're going to go right on to item number 10, which is new business. And then I need a motion to suspend the rules. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to suspend the rules requiring the read and inform and read for the first time by title-only resolution number 0-2025 through 03-2024. Let's get on the balance. Okay.
Your second. It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
These resolutions were posted six days prior to the meeting.
Thank you for that. Vice Mayor Holt. All right, would the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
All right, motion to suspend passes 6-0. Would the clerk please read Resolution Number 01-2025 by title only?
Resolution Number 01-2025. A resolution changing the name of John Charles Estate Drive to John Charles Estate, I'm sorry, John Charles Drive and requesting acceptance by the Board of Hamilton County Commissioners.
Thank you for that, Ms. Bailey. I motion that we adopt Resolution Number 01-2025. All right, it's been moved improperly seconded. So this resolution is necessary because the developer of John Charles Estates first submitted the wrong name as John Charles Estates Drive. And that name was on the road dedication plaque that was recorded at the county. Later, when the planning commission reviewed the record plaque for the development, the consensus was that the name was too long and had too many words in it. The developer was receptive, and together, we agreed to drop Estates from the name and call it simply John Charles Drive. The county has a procedure for changing a street name, and the first requirement is a resolution of council approving the change of name. The resolution will be permanently recorded at the county so that there is no confusion about the street name. This is a simple approval, and because of the timing, it won't affect or inconvenience any of our residents. And I urge its passage. That has no bearing whatsoever on the rest of the development pertaining to the size of the homes, the lot sizes themselves, things like, it's just a name change because we would have to fit all of that on that small green plate. And with that, I would urge adoption. So would the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adam? Yes.
All right, Resolution Number 01-2025 passes 6-0. Would the clerk please read Resolution Number 02-2025 by title only?
Resolution Number 02, Resolution Number 02-2025, accepting the bid of Capital Electric Line Builders LLC for the Forest Park Traffic Signal Project.
All right, thank you for that. Is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I move to adopt Resolution Number 02-2025.
Second.
It's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion, Councilmember?
Yes, an open public bid for the city of Forest Park Central Traffic Control Signal Project was held, and we received three bids. The engine estimate was $710,000. And the bid range was from $612,000, $464,000 to $704,960. The low bid is Capital Electric, who currently performs maintenance on our signals throughout the year. Our recommendation is to proceed with Capital Electric. This project is funded by two grants. The first through OKI is for $278,235. And the second through the SORA grant for $447,810. This project will be starting in the spring and completed by spring 2026.
All right, thank you for that, Councilmember. Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion?
Harrison?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
All right, Resolution Number 02-2025 passes 6-0. Would the clerk please read Resolution Number 03-2025 by title only?
Resolution Number 03-2025, authorizing the city manager to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission's state capital improvement and for a local transportation improvement program and to execute contracts as required.
Thank you for that, Councilmember. Ms. Bailey, is there a motion, Councilmember Sylvester?
Yes, I moved, excuse me. I move to adopt Resolution Number 03-2025.
It's been moved, is there a second? It moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, this resolution is to allow staffs to apply for grant funding for the next phase of repaving the, for Sharon Road through OPEWC. The grant request is for $249,275, which is about 50% of the project. The city is also applying for the MRAF funds. This would continue the repaving eastbound to Northern, Northern, Northern Boulevard.
Okay. All right, thank you for that, Councilmember Sylvester. Would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Hope?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
Sylvester?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
All right, Resolution Number 03-2025 passes 6-0. And I-
Resolution actually 25?
Yes, it's supposed to be 25, yes.
Because on the, it says from 3 to 2024. That's why I'm asking.
She's referencing, it was a typo in the motion to suspend. It says 2024, but it's fine.
I just want to make sure that it's either 24, 25, which one was correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It's 25. I do need a point of order, John, because we have a presentation. And I wonder if we would need to do a motion to amend the agenda, to allow for the presentation, or just to go back to that item on the agenda?
Yes, a motion to amend it. Make it the last item.
Okay, okay. All right, so then actually, we have another motion. Councilmember Sylvester, item number D?
Yes, I motion to accept the general fund summary report as contained in the departmental reports.
Second.
All right, it's been moved improperly seconded. Is there any further discussion?
No further discussion.
All right, this one can be a voice vote. So all those in favor, let it be known by the sound of voting, aye? Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you. All right, now I need to make a motion to amend the agenda to go back to item number three on the agenda and allow for a presentation. Is there a second?
Thank you.
All right, it's been moved improperly seconded. This can be a voice vote as well, but I'll do a roll call because we're going to have a wonderful presentation from our president of the MPHC council. So would the clerk please call the roll on the motion to amend?
Yes.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Harrison?
Yes.
Hope?
Yes.
Moore?
Yes.
All right, motion to amend passes. So we're going to go back to item number three, which is presentations. And ma'am, if you would like to come up to the podium, state your name. Do you need any audio, visual, any presentation materials or?
No. Handouts, because I didn't know that audiovisual was available.
Okay, yeah, old-fashioned is good for us.
No, right? Something that works.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Are we ready?
Yes. I'm going to just pull the mic close to you for transcription purposes.
My name is Jamie McClinton. I'm the president of the National Panneleto Council of Greater Cincinnati. First, I want to say thank you for granting me time this evening. I apologize for my tardiness. As a veteran of the military, that is not my fashion. Unfortunately, it took me a little bit to get from downtown to get up here. But thank you so much. What you see before you this evening is a packet that is proposing a possible partnership sponsorship with the National Panneleto Council, with Forest Park, the city of Forest Park. In the past, we've done several things with the city of Forest Park. We have, over the last two years, hosted our annual cookout here, hoping to energize and bring more visibility to the city. And I hope to expand that partnership with this. This year, we are doing our inaugural youth conference, and that covers all the students, middle school and high school students in the greater Cincinnati area. This is going to be held at the University of Cincinnati's Medical College on Saturday, March 1st, 2025, from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM. As you can see in the packet, there are several sponsorship opportunities. The lowest packet begins at 500. And of course, there is a presenting sponsorship packet at 5,000. Of course, it's up to the city to vote and choose what it is that you guys would like to participate in and actually sponsor us for. Just a little background on this particular conference. We hope to impact the youth in greater Cincinnati and provide them a holistic environment, giving them the resources they need to adequately choose a career pathway. So we are catering to all the children in regards to college prep as well as entering into a civil service or a trade job. So we are going to have several colleges. At this point, we've secured 15 universities to attend this conference. We have the police cadets, fire cadets. Several of the trade companies will be attending, offering the children on-the-spot opportunities. We have the CRC Summer Program. I feel like I'm missing a list. I should have maybe brought that. But we want to just kind of change it up. Everyone has a conference, but we want to do it a little different. We are going to offer 16 sessions. We've secured all our facilitators for that. So we're going to have like ACT, SAT prep, all the college things that you need, resume writing, essay writing, as well as some more holistic items and some life skills. So we're going to have budgeting and financing. We're going to also have stress management, conflict resolution, and then just some input on how to actually prep for the civil service testing and to actually secure those jobs. We want to go further than this. We want to make sure that this is just, you know, a cornerstone. We want to offer other things to the kids here in greater Cincinnati, like the tour at the airport to really get the ins and outs of some of these jobs and allow them some shadowing opportunities. We want to expose them to the Divine Nine and all of the educational initiatives that we already offer, mentorships, scholarships, et cetera. When you guys get a chance, if you don't mind, you can also go onto our registration page, and you will see that every single one of our scholarships are listed on the registration. So the kids can one-stop shop and apply for all the scholarships that's been offered by every organization. And we also plan on offering scholarships at this event. So we'll have two large scholarships, one for a graduating male and a graduating female. 10 micro scholarships are also known as book scholarships. And I also plan to do a raffling and maybe give away about five laptops. We're going to feed the kids. So a well-balanced breakfast, snacks. And then we're working with a caterer who has willingly sponsored his time and services to create and curate a nutritional lunch for them. We hope to have up to 300 attendees at this event. So that's all I have. Are there any questions?
Does anyone on council have any questions for Mrs. McClinton?
If we decide we're going to be a particip-, sorry. If we decide we're participating, I think it's a great, great idea. If um if we decide we're gonna be a particip- sorry, if we decide we're participating, I think it's a great, great idea, but uh we're always looking for opportunities to uh recruit as well. I know you said you're gonna have some other industries there and industry folks. Is there an opportunity for like the city of Forest Park to have uh a table there just to talk to uh the kids about the opportunities here?
Yes, definitely. We provide the tables and chairs. Just gotta let me know, and we will set you guys up. Um and then, as you can see, for each packet, there are also marketing opportunities, and we market that on like the swag bags. Uh these are just the initial drafts of our hot cards, but once you get done collecting all of our sponsorship, the all the sponsors will also be noted on the second wave of hot cards, um our digital ad book as well, um and of course, the verbal acknowledgement at the event.
So I have a question. Outside of council and the city supporting financially or whatnot, what is it that council itself can do um to support you all, just be there? Registration or anything like, just let us know possibly how we can support you as well.
Oh, love it, yes, please offer yourself, anything for the kids. Yes. So like I said, the tabling opportunity, I I invite anyone who's gonna provide the kids with an opportunity to secure employment or to embark on a lifelong career. So if that's being offered here with the city, please come. Uh we also have volunteer opportunities. Um so we can, I can offer that to uh chairman here, our councilman Harrison, and he can share that. You guys can sign up to volunteer if you would like, but you're invited just to be there. I also just want, you know, great role models, that presence available to the kids. Um this is gonna be more interactive for them. Um like I noted, we're gonna have sixteen sessions, but they're not gonna be like death by PowerPoint, you know? This is gonna be more roundtable with the facilitators in the middle, allowing the kids to voice their choice and interact with the material that's being offered. We've made sure, um I've um I've actually taken time to discuss how to best curate these sessions with other prof- uh professionals in this area of holding conferences for kids. And we've decided to kind of like make sure we narrow it down to forty-five minutes, which thirty-five minutes is interactive time. That way, we're not boring and we're deaf. We don't want the kids to feel like they're in school on a Saturday, right? So um but as far as participating, it's it's an open door. You know, we want you guys to just be there, even if you're just there at the conference, interacting with the kids, talking to them, asking them what it is that they want to do with their life, encouraging them, you know, that part is welcome.
I have another question, and that is, are you all targeting any specific zip codes of youth that you want to participate or anything like that, just kids in general, any particular like zip codes specifically low-income neighborhoods or anything like that, that you're looking to be a part of this specific event?
No, it's greater Cincinnati. You know, it's a wide target. The only piece that is narrowed down is the middle school and high school portion. Um so even if there are low-income kids, so I've, I have, you know, like out there in the trenches, literally focused on those groups, you know, I deal with certain other things within our city dynamic, like the Gun Violence Task Force Collaborative in the city. And um so I interact with those organizations that deal with the lower-income students, and I make sure that I'm interacting with their uh demographic per se, at their schools, in their neighborhoods, with those youth groups that actually interact with them face-to-face, to make sure that all the children feel welcomed and know that this is for them.
Are you uh are you uh contacting, let's say, Wynton Woods High School or the middle school?
I'm sorry.
Are you are you contacting Wynton Woods directly or?
Oh, yes. So I've already sent publications to Deborah Bryant uh to go to the school, um the school board, thank you. Um I've sent communications over to Drew Jackson. So, yeah, I make sure I interact with you guys, you know. We take our partnership serious.
Absolutely, absolutely.
We appreciate your partnership, because two years in a row, we were hoping for a third year, maybe get the the Greek picnic out here, so um-
We're working on it. We're talking about it.
It's always very well attended.
Here at Central Park, we may be looking at Kemper Meadows, you know. We're we're trying to keep you guys in the loop, like I said.
We appreciate that.
Yes, thank you.
And go to high school, go to college, it is always well-attended. I've I've seen it uh over the years, so we will discuss this. And thank you for bringing this to us to sponsor. Does any other member of council have any questions for Mrs. McClinton? All right, so again, thank you for all your community work, um and thank you for bringing this to us. This is really exciting an opportunity.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely.
All right. Okay, so that concludes all new business and our presentations. So is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Is there any other business to come before the body? Hearing none, council meeting is adjourned.